Let the record reflect we have reconvened with all members present. Please rise for the pledge and remain standing after the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing. We lost another great Madisonian. Gene Zipper, born April 6, 1920, was raised in Orange, New Jersey, but was a Madison resident since 1951. Died peacefully at his home on January 10. Gene and his wife Rose, married for 71 years, as I mentioned, moved here in 1951. And Rose has been a lifelong resident of Madison. Rose and Gene raised their five children, Carl, Gene, Barbara, Richard, and John. And Gene leaves behind nine grandchildren and two great-granddaughters. Obviously, a member of our greatest generation, Gene was proud of his service to the country during World War II. He was a staff sergeant in the U.S. Army Air Corps, serving from 42 to 1945 in the U.S., England, and Italy. Rose and Gene were longtime parishioners of St. Martyr Church. Gene loved handyman projects, and this is, these are, all this information I pulled from his obituary, including buying a house, and one of these, this is an ultimate handyman project. He bought a house that was located on the Route 24 right away, right by Fairview and Greenwood, and had that house moved up to Greenwood Avenue, a little bit further down, and restored it where he created his family home. Gene loved Madison, and for those that have been coming here for a while will remember he was always right here, sitting, I think he might have been a front row student. He was a front and center. And we will remember Gene always as a gentleman as he would step up to the microphone and say, "Gene Zipper, I lived on Greenwood Avenue for a few years." Of course, that few years was nearly 70. He would then share his thoughts for Madison. I would also get periodically called into his office at a table at Bagel Chateau as he shared breakfast with Rose. We will truly miss Gene Zipper. Let's take a moment of thought and prayer for Gene Zipper, and our thoughts are with Rose and the rest of the Zipper family. We have a motion for the executive minutes of December 10, 2018.
All moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion for the regular minutes, December 10.
Still moved. Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Welcome all. And for those that we didn't see at the reorganization meeting, Happy New Year. A few announcements, it has been a long time in between regular meetings. One meeting in December, it was a five Monday month, so it makes for extra long time in between, but I'll try to keep my comments short. You may have already seen through social media announcements that Madison was voted best town to raise a family in New Jersey. I call that, so, we already knew that award, but it's certainly great for people to recognize that Madison is truly a great place to raise a family. And part of that is the great holiday season we have in Madison. I just again want to thank everyone that, from the total family all the way through that makes our downtown so, in the spirit of the season, from Santa Claus to the beautiful tree we had this year, and all the decorated poles, and keeping it up into early January so everyone can appreciate it. A few other things going on, we're having our annual committee leadership training, and invitations will go out to our many committee boards and boards. The training will be January 31, and we do this in cooperation with Chatham Borough. So this year, we're going to be running at the Chatham Borough Council Chambers in their Borough Hall on Fairmont Avenue. So all committee, either chairs, vice chairs, or wannabe chairs and vice chairs, it is open to anyone, put that in your calendar, the 31st at 7:00 P.M. And also related to committees, as I mentioned on my comments on January 2, a commitment that we are making to make sure that all our committees are running on all cylinders. So launching a task force to review our various committees. Some are set by statute, such as the zoning board of adjustment, but others, we're going to make sure our committees have the structure that makes them successful and supports the work, that they have the ordinances behind them so they can understand what their work is and their structure is, and also be looking at the membership and making sure that whatever limitations or however it's set up, that it feeds their work. So under new business, I will be appointing Ben Wolkowitz as the chair, as mentioned on New Year's Day or New Year's reorganization meeting. We were not going to let him get too far without bringing him back in, so he graciously accepted my offer to chair it, and council members Carmelo Vitale, Pat Rowe, and Deb Cohen will be on that committee. And speaking of the reorganization meeting, I want to thank all those who attended. We had a full room here, and it took a lot of work to put that meeting together. I've been to reorganization meetings in other towns, and I might be a little prejudiced, but I don't think anyone does it like Madison does. And so I want to thank everyone. And most people between Christmas and New Year's kind of relax and take it easy. Meanwhile, Liz Osborne is working endless hours trying to get everything put together and finalize all our appointments, and so I appreciate all that effort, Liz. And a special, also a big thank you to Lieutenant Governor Sheila Oliver for joining us on the second to give the oath of office to Austria and Deb. Also would want to make an announcement, obviously with what's going on in Washington with the partial shutdown of the federal government, it's a tough time for many who rely on paychecks from the federal government. And this council has taken a step to help those in Madison that may be in need. This is for federal employees who have been furloughed. We have been, through the Jacob Henry Perkins Trust, which is a trust that was established many years ago in the borough of Madison, to support those in need. We will be able to advance 0% interest loans to anyone in need. So we'll get full information on this in the coming days, but anyone who is employed by the federal government and a resident of Madison who has a worry about making ends meet until the government reopens can reach out to Ray Cody. Everything will be kept confidential. You can get the email on Rosenet, but it is codyr@rosenet.org. And I thank the council for making that all available so we can help out those in need. Employee for the month of January is Chrissy Mahler of the Tax Collector's Office for her commitment, hard work, and managing and calculating pilot, which is payment in lieu of tax payments, and it's not an easy thing to do, so we thank Chrissy for her work. So when you go in to pay your water, electric, or tax bill, please congratulate Chrissy in the Tax Collector's Office. Anniversaries for the month of January, Tom Dibiasi of DPW, 40 years on January 22, so please congratulate Tom if you see him around town, and Frank Davis, also DPW, 35 years on January 3. And a little surprise thing, I'm going to come down here a little bit. I'm going to get in trouble now. Lisa Ellis, can you come up here for a second? Yeah, I'm going to be, yeah, I knew this could happen, but, and we had to put an agenda item on here to make sure you were here, but, yes, it was, we were going to have to do it anyway. But what we like to do is not only recognize the work that is done by Borough Committees, but also by volunteers elsewhere in the community. And to my left is one of the great volunteers who just stepped down from one of her roles with the Board of Education. And on December 18, I attended the Board of Education meeting to present Lisa with a proclamation recognizing her 16-year service on the Board of Education. That was from 2003 to 2018. And as I mentioned that night, there's a saying that many people are very familiar with, and that is, if you need something done, ask a busy person. But the new saying is, if you need many things done, you ask Lisa Ellis. And legacy might be an overused word, but I don't think it is when it comes to Lisa. And you truly have left a legacy with the school district. In addition to those 16 years, she served as the president from 2005 to 2017, providing leadership that expanded all our schools, strengthened the curriculum, repurposed Green Village Road School property, and brought the Borough and Board of Education together that we now work through shared services for the betterment of our community. And as I started off by talking about the fact that this has been voted Madison the top place to raise a family, you know what number one is on that list, is education of our children. And Lisa, thank you so much for everything you've done to make that so special.
I love surprises. Not at all. Thank you very much. I mean, the celebration on December 18 was more than enough. I'm still humbled and a little embarrassed by it, but thank you. You know, I love nothing better than working with people in this room, and I greatly appreciate this, even though it pains me.
Reports from committees. Ms. Bailey, Public Safety.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. From the Fire Department, in December, the Fire Department responded to 18 general alarms, 17 still alarms, 25 investigations, 52 EMS calls, and they did help in a fire over in Whippany. They also did 40 fire prevention inspections, 15 resale smoke/CO inspections were also made. On December 10, all interior structural firefighters were issued personal bailout systems that were purchased with money from the 2018 capital budget. All took part in eight hours of training with the new system. The bailout system is a self-rescue system that is attached to their existing bunker gear harness. Should a fire situation require a firefighter to make an emergency exit out of a window, our firefighters can now quickly and easily deploy their bailout system to lower themselves to the ground. And we need volunteer firefighters. Any resident between the age of 18 and 45 and good physical and mental condition, please consider joining as a volunteer firefighter. And you can go to www.madisonfd.com for more information on how to join. From the Police Department, during the month of December 2018, our three new officers began working with our agency. They have all completed their training in department policy and procedures during the past week. All three officers are now assigned to a patrol squad with a field training officer. Following a satisfactory completion of their field training, which is approximately four months, they will be patrolling on their own. The Police Department completed their body worn camera training, where all officers are now equipped with body cameras. As per policy, they are to be worn when all officers are on duty and in uniform. They are affixed to their front chest area. All Madison patrol vehicles now are equipped with new in-car cameras, replacing the cameras that were over 10 years old. Two new police vehicles are in the process of being lettered and equipped with required interior instruments, and they will be replacing the two oldest cars in the fleet, which both have over 120,000 miles and several hundred thousand miles of idling hours. One of the vehicles being replaced will be put back into service as, for a school resource officer. And Sergeant Perrelli completed command and leadership school given by the New Jersey Chiefs of Police Association, and this is a 10-week course that Madison Police Department has been sending their sergeants to. He graduates January 17. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance and Borough Clerk, this is Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. The Finance Department has announced that Edmonds is the software that the Borough uses for accounts payable, budgets, and tax collection. Last week, the system was shut down for annual maintenance, and so it could be reset for the 2019 budget year. The process went very smoothly, and the system is back up and running. The payroll staff has been very busy over the past week, rolling over the time management system, updating salaries, and loading in accrued time for the employees. The administrator and CFO continue to work on the annual budget. This evening, we're going to be discussing and hopefully confirm the upcoming budget hearing dates. The council will be discussing the budget over the next three months. All of these discussions will be held at open public meetings, and the residents are encouraged to attend. It's important to remember that these meetings are all recorded so residents can watch them at a later date, and all budget presentations can be found on Rosenet under the annual budget process page. The tax collector, this doesn't surprise us that the tax collector's main job is to collect taxes. This past year, Hattie and Chrissy in the Tax Collector's Office did a fabulous job. This past year, we collected 99.08% of all the property taxes. This is one of the best tax collection rates in the last 10 years. So thank you for Chrissy and Hattie for all their hard work. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Utilities, Mr. Rowe.
I'm going to try to do this a different way today because I forgot to bring my paper. First, from the Electric Department, sadly, the Electric Department has taken down the Christmas tree, so the holiday season's over. Next, at the West End Sewer Pump Station, the Electric Department and an electrician upgraded the electrical service. Next, we're in the process of auctioning off the department's two old bucket trucks. The dealer had offered us $23,000 for both, but so far, we've had electricians offer us $50,000 per truck, so we may be seeing some significant money coming back to the Borough coffers.
Excellent.
And last, from the Electric Department, both the Electric Department and the Water Department have been doing significant work around the project at 19 Greenwood Avenue. The Electric Department put the primary circuit that was de-energized so that the contractor could work on the front of the building back in service, and the Water Department actually replaced the curb box that had to be excavated and swapped out, and water to the building has now been turned on. And the Water Department also notes that they've had to shut off a building because of frozen pipes, so they asked us to make sure that you know that during the cold winter season, you first remove the garden hoses from outside faucets, second, shut off inside valves, and even if you have an antifrost faucet, please make sure you remove the hose first and let the water drain away, otherwise you may still be experiencing some problems. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Ms. Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. So first, echoing the mayor's statement earlier, our council chambers are haunted by ghosts, the Zippers and Bruce, all the people that were such faithful volunteers for so long. But it's really also gratifying to look out in the council audience right now and see so many young people, and yeah, I'm talking about you, sweetie, young people stepping up, young people stepping up, yeah, Claire, you're in that, young people, stepping up and in helping Madison, because Madison is a community, and we are only as good as our community spirit, and our community spirit lives in our volunteers, so thank you. So we talked about the Christmas tree and the decorations coming down, and if you thought it was depressing to take your own decorations down, can you imagine what everybody walking through downtown felt the other day? DPW, just want to let you know, in terms of the leaf collection and how devoted DPW was, Christmas Eve at 3 o'clock is when they finished picking up all the leaves in Madison. So DPW left no leaf unpicked up, then they're now moved on to Christmas trees. We talk about how long we have, we're able to keep vehicles in use, and part of the reason is, is that DPW services these vehicles, and they take care of them. They, you know, in the last couple of weeks, they've serviced and repaired police vehicles, a leaf claw, all the snowplows, a truck, a DPW, an Electric Department vehicle, all of the Health Department vehicles, they've serviced the generators. They are now addressing leaves in the parks and downtown storm maintenance, and then the sewer, the Sewer Department. I mean, we, you know, we don't talk a lot about the Sewer Department, but because of the work that they have done, the Water Department has done, Madison has seen its share of the cost of the joint municipal treatment plant go down considerably. And that's good, because we had to bond this year for needed repairs and facilities at the sewer, and we had a pretty low rate that we had to, a lower rate that we would have had to pick up. Engineering, I said I wasn't going to say a lot about this because Mr. Vogel is here, and I'm sure he will cover it, but, you know, road improvements like taxes are something you can always count on in a capital year, but they're really doing a good job. And, you know, I know we all let them know if we don't think they're doing a good job, but it might be nice if you see somebody in a yellow shirt downtown or around town, and you stopped and said, "Thank you." So that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Media Affairs, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to talk about the Downtown Development Commission first, and the first thing I'd like to do is thank the Electric Department. I was sitting home this past week waiting for a request to come volunteer to take down the lights and the wreaths, and the Electric Department did that for us, so I want to thank them very much for that. That's great. The new edition of the Madison Magazine, published by Town Square Publications, is now available. Free copies are available throughout this building and are in the process of being distributed to local businesses. The Downtown Development Commission will hold its annual reorganization meeting on Thursday, January 17 at 7:15 P.M. Everybody's invited to come. I wish more people would attend the Downtown Development Commission meetings because it is where you live and what's happening. Okay, so please come if you can on January 17. Save the date, The Taste of Madison presently, presented jointly by the DDC, the Chamber of Commerce and Rotary Club, is scheduled for Monday, March 18. More information will be released on that shortly. For the Chamber of Commerce, the annual Chamber Holiday Party is scheduled for tomorrow evening at 6:00 P.M., and is being held at Rocco's. Please come, it should be a lot of fun. New this spring, the first Chamber Camp Fair is scheduled for Sunday, March 24, at the Madison Community Arts Center, from 10:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Also from the Chamber, the annual issuance of the holiday ornament was a big success. There were less than 12 left over, the last time I checked, and the Rose City Reindeer Scavenger Hunt was a big hit, particularly with the kids. And what else? Taste of Madison, I talked about that. Oh, by the way, they have about four sponsors that have committed so far, and the Nautilus Placement Program, the MATS, okay, that's due, done in January through June. Madison Loyalty Rewards Program needs to be revised a little bit. Caldwell Banker is the sponsor of that. Okay, and that's it for the Chamber. For the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, we held a reorganization meeting on January 10. We elected Tom Hanahan as chair and Jeff Payton from the library as vice chair. The goals for this year are going to be to get seniors more involved in the community, and particularly senior citizens' efforts. And also, we want to report to the council, because it is an advisory committee, we want to report to the council on a fairly regular basis, perhaps quarterly. The seniors on Rosenet is going to be divided into three sections, Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, Senior Center, and Trittown 55+. So there should be more information coming from that. From the Senior Center, on Friday, January 18, at noon, they're offering a pasta lunch with dessert and coffee at the tour at the firehouse. With the help of the county, they're looking for a replacement volunteer for the Medicare counseling services at the Senior Center. So if you know anybody who's interested, please have them submit a form, contact myself or Tom. Okay? They started advertising in a newsletter, an application from the state for NJSave, where older disabled residents of Morris County can fill out a one-step application to see if they are eligible for multiple benefits relating to Medicare, health care costs, living expenses. They can, online, it's njdoas-u-a dot force dot com. The ARP tax preparation season is now here, they're taking appointments now. The first appointment starts on Wednesday, February 6, each Wednesday through April 10. Looking for more members to join the exercise classes at $5 a person. Okay, walk-ins are welcome, but you can also sign up on Community Pass and pay online as well. Okay? For the Recreation Advisory Committee, the work at the Rosedale Baseball Fields, Lucy D. Hut, and Dodge Fields was satisfactorily completed by Advanced Landscaping this fall. Significant improvements were made in terms of the playability, drainage, and overall appearance of the fields. Fencing repairs were also performed at both Rosedale Fields, and they're going to now turn their attention to the Lucy D. Howard and Myrtle Fields in 2019. 2019 5th to 8th Grade Ski Club made its first trip to Mount Peter on Friday, January 11. They have over 200 children, and parent chaperones enrolled this year. They're excited to have Ski Program Coordinator Chris Mayan onboard. The Rosedale ice rink is usable when the flag is up, but are covered in the, excuse me, when the flag is up. Okay, they do have a rink supervisor who will be covering until they get a permanent replacement. In order to preserve their batteries, AEDs for the athletic fields have been removed from all locations for the winter except the MRC, Dodge Field, and the Rosedale Ice Rink. They will be placed back in the cabinets when the spring schedule begins. Free CPR, AED training courses for recreation volunteers are up and running at the Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corps. Volunteers can enroll online via the recreation page on Rosenet. I met with the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts twice this past couple of weeks. They are in the process of developing a strategic plan. Couple of their needs that they've identified preliminarily are the glazed bricks on the north wall are peeling and need restoration. Also, water needs to be directed away from the building. They're talking about perhaps a dry well or landscaping, something to help through that. And they need more space. They're looking for more space for their artifacts, and they've considered at least three alternatives right now. And that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And Health, Ms. Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. The Board of Health, 2019 reorganization and regular meeting is tomorrow night at 7:30 P.M. at the Civic Center, 28 Walnut Street. Members of the public are welcome to attend. Dog cat license renewals have been mailed, and residents are reminded that the renewals are due by January 31, 2019. Residents who have new pets can go to rosenet.org for a license application. Retail food establishments should have their license renewals in by January 31, 2019. From the public health nurse, reports of cases of flu are on the rise and expected to remain elevated over the next month or two. Flu vaccine is still available, it's not too late to be vaccinated. Please call the Health Department at 973-593-3079 for an appointment. And finally, pertussis or whooping cough illness has recently affected residents of our area. Vaccine for protection against pertussis is recommended for all. For more information, call the Health Department. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any communications or petitions?
Yes, Mayor. Today, Mayor and council received an email containing 428 signatures regarding the dog park that were collected on Bottle Hill Day.
Thank you. And now we're on to our first of two invitations for discussion from the public. This is limited to agenda items. If you want to comment on anything besides the agenda items, which I'll outline in just a second, that'll come up shortly, a little bit later in the meeting. So the agenda items you may So the agenda items you may comment on are the parking update, which Lisa will be presenting a little bit, a little, kind of a little teaser of things to come. A lot of work could be done in the parking arena this year. The proposed dog park, and they are looking to just get consensus for the Council for their next steps, and we'll hear from that shortly. You'll be hearing about the 2019 municipal budget schedule and the Open Space Quarterly Report, and then also the 2019 capital budget overview. So you can comment on those items, or you can comment on any of these resolutions, and I'll go through them very quickly, so you also have them for the consent agenda when that comes up later. Resolution 41 is approving a renewal, the application of Bolialian license for strikes. 42 is renewal application for amusement device license and permits for strikes. Resolution 43 is for grant application from Dieter funds of $12,419, and that is a, has a cash match of $3,100 and in-kind match of $9,300 from the borough. Resolution 44 is authorized a collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters Local Union, which is our DPW workers. Resolution 45 is authorizing our 2019 gasoline purchase through Morris County Co-op. Resolution 46, same thing, but for diesel fuel. Resolution 47 is also a Morris County Co-op pricing for salt. Resolution 48 is ratifying contract for tree king, for tree removal services under a co-op contract. Resolution 49, rental agreement for using the public safety complex for AAA defensive driving instruction, excuse me. Resolution 50 is appointing Alexander Fish for the position of Acting Plumbing Subcode Official, Mechanical Inspector at $38 an hour. Resolution 51 is reduction of bond posting for the Planning Board Application P-15-2012 Millennium Development, which is the Kings Road and Division Avenue. Resolution 52 is approving raffle licenses for Madison High School. Resolution 53 is awarding contract, MBT contracting for electric storage building, and this is in the amount of $336,000. This money was appropriated through ordinances 30, 2015, and ordinance 37, 2018. Resolution 54, resolution approving release of funds for affordable housing, and that is up to $70,000 for the renovation of 30 Central Avenue. Resolution 55 has been pulled, it's going to be reworked, and we'll come back next meeting. Resolution 56 is ratifying appointment of Matt Broner to intern position in the Business Development Office at the rate of $12 an hour. Resolution 57, authorizing change order and final payment for diversified infrastructure services for 2018 sanitary sewer and television, televising the sewer lines and repairs. And this is a, adding $19,795 to the $225,000 contract. Resolution 58 is approving raffle licenses for St. Vincent Martyr Church. Resolution 59 is appointing Christine Mahler to the position of tax collector, annual salary of $65,442. Resolution 60 is approving release of funds from the Affordable Trust Fund of $40,000 for architectural services. So you may comment on any of those resolutions or the agenda items I mentioned. If you want to comment on those, please step to the lectern, state your name, your address, the agenda item you are addressing. Try to keep your comments to three minutes, but I'll give you a warning at three and give you a grace period of one minute. Anyone wish to comment on those items, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move on to our agenda discussions. Lisa, parking update.
I know I wasn't allowed any slides, so this will be really quick. Now I know why. As you probably know, Mayor Conley created an ad hoc parking committee in September of 2018. The committee includes the Mayor, myself, Jim Burnett, representatives from the Chamber of Commerce and the DDC, Lieutenant Joe Longo, and Parking Enforcement Officer Cindy Weir of the Madison Police Department. We've had two meetings to date, one on September 11th and one on December 19th. The basic goals and objectives of the committee have been to find more merchant commercial parking options in order to free up spacers, spaces for customers. Increase equity and efficiency of commuter and daily parking. Address parking inventory management and marketing issues. So far, we've been very busy tackling a lot of projects. Currently, we are evaluating the, all parking regulations, which include permit fees, penalties, and we hope to be ready to make recommendations for changes to ordinance chapter 134 parking lots before the end of the first quarter. One substantive component of this will be the creation, or the potential creation of merchant on-street parking zones. This will be areas on streets that are underparked, where, where are empty most days, a little further out of the center of town. It's been an ongoing problem where we have merchants parking directly in front of their stores. We're hoping to open up those spaces for customers. The ones we've targeted already could add 107, over, about 107 merchant parking spaces. You know, and these would be, they would be open to merchants if they are open. So they will not be reserved for merchants, that's not the idea. But if the, that space is open, merchant can park there without penalty. We are looking, and I just got the first iteration of this from the Police Department on raising parking violations and fines and looking to make them progressive. We have a lot of repeat offenders who just continue to pay a $22 ticket. We are looking at the best use of existing parking spaces, and can we create more parking or better use of those spaces by working on shared agreements and changing schedules? So what's to keep a merchant who is here during the day and a tenant from using that same space if their, you know, their schedules don't conflict? Also, we've noticed that in the commuter lots, many days those spaces go unused. So we are hoping to open those up after, let's say, 9:30 in the morning to merchant commercial permits. We're talking about adding a few grab-and-go spaces on Main Street. So that will, that's a change in timing that should help free up some spaces. We've had the engineering firm, Amland and Osterkorn, looking into the potential for reconfiguring parking lots to see if spaces can be added without major construction. The Green Avenue Lot here and the Prospect Maple Lot seem to be the most promising from that perspective, but that's still in, in works, and the committee will review it again at the end of the month. We are also working on public-private shared parking agreements using Joe Colangelo and Boxcar. They have a model for this that they've launched in New Canaan, Connecticut, that has a lot of promise. We've invited them to come talk to the ad hoc committee before the end of the month, so that's on the schedule as well. We had a meeting the other day. We're continuing to pursue improvements to the commuter and daily parking situation with an app, potentially a kiosk. That's still, there's still a lot of work to be done there, but there is definitely some promise. No more sticking those dirty $5 bills in those slots. That's the goal, definitely. So our next steps include, on Thursday night, I'll be presenting a similar report to the Downtown Development Commission, getting their input. And then we are scheduling the ad hoc parking committee meeting again to review all these sort of pieces that are up in the air before the end of the month. And I'm hoping right soon after that meeting, we'll be able to finalize all the ordinance changes that will have to come to council and give you adequate time to review and discuss those. And that's pretty much where we are. Once we have the where everybody is going to park finalized, then we can address updating maps and creating a marketing campaign so we can direct people to proper parking procedures and expectations, et cetera. So that's, that's where we are. Anybody have any questions?
John?
Yes. One of the, the other things that we initiated in town was a pilot program, a test for electronic scooters. And I understand that pilots come from, I'm just curious, what, what you felt was the impact on parking?
I think that, actually, Joe Colangelo came in to give us a brief little update on last Friday morning on the scooter program. They're moving into a paid model, and, and they're looking at that. He had some statistics as far as what he thought, I think, like, what did he say, like eight parking spaces a day, it probably freed up. But that, that's all available to you.
Yeah. One of the interesting things that came up related to downtown parking is, you know, this was intended to open up commuter spots, but they were, the people that were in the pilot program actually started using it more to go to downtown Madison on the weekends when, especially Saturdays, when it's really crazy. So it was, had this ripple effect of opening up shopping spots, too. Sorry.
I think there's a lot of promise in, with scooters of, and there's, there also, there's another model that's coming out, and they've had some pre-purchases on that. It's a little heavier duty kind of model, so that, lot more to come on the scooters, for sure.
Thank you. Boring, and then Ostry?
Yeah, I think we should point out, because a lot of people have been watching the news and down in a lot of, in some of the, you know, other municipalities, specifically I know of in Washington, they're not using scooters, they're using electronic, what is the thing we all have for our kids?
Skateboards.
What?
They're like skateboards.
Yeah. Yeah, these, these are a lot safer than that. And I'm not sure, I don't know the, I don't know the other company, but, but Boxcar, correct me if I'm wrong, it's kind of like Airbnb for your driveway.
Exactly. They have that, they're, they're doing that already in town. And they just took a preliminary look at potential private entities that they can approach about parking, and they were able to identify about 1,000 spots rather quickly in the downtown quarter. Now, even if we were able to access, you know, 10% of that, it would be amazing, so.
Ostry?
Thank you, Mayor. Will we be able to get a few more strategic handicap spots in the center of town?
Yes, that's, that's part of it, too. We've talked to Joe and, Joe and Cindy about that as well.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Pat?
So first, thank you. It sounds like you guys have done a ton of work, and actually, this is going to pay some real dividends, so I had a couple of questions. The merchant parking we're talking about, can you give us some examples of where you're talking about moving it to?
Yes. I brought my little chart with me. We're talking about these, on Kings, there's like eight, it's like little bits and pieces. So on Kings Road, it would be, let's say, beyond the, where Madison Autobody is, on the far side of the, of the street. So like the north side of the street, there's like 15 spaces there. On, there's like eight spaces here on Maple between Kings and like the Hartley Dodge driveway. On Kings Road, those new spaces that were added during the, right after the construction down that end, there's like 14 spaces there that are seldom used. Talking about actually finishing the striping on Green Avenue between Kings and Wilmer, there's about, I had to guess on that one because they're not marked, but approximately 15, perhaps there. On Chapel Street, there are about 19 available there. On Cook Avenue, we had always intended this, once that reconstruction is done and striping is done there, there's potentially about 19 there. And then on, we figured on Central Avenue, the block between Cook Avenue and Chapel Street, there's another 17 available there.
So some of that stuff is already in use, but you think you'll get better compression if you line all of it carefully?
Yes.
Okay. And are we gonna, so we're going to change the rules so that they will have some sort of merchant ID so that they will not be subject to the four-hour rule?
Right.
Yeah, that's basically, yeah, the wording would be exactly that. It would be signed would say, could be two-hour limit, except for merchant permit.
Okay. The next thing was, in general, I just wrote this down as we were going through things, are any of these things going to require additional budget this year for, I don't even know what department?
No, I don't think so. I think, because I, I believe some of the minor parking lot reconstructions have been built into the capital budget, you know? I mean, it's really like limited stuff, like restriping, maybe a shift of the way the, the entrances and exits go. So none of that is substantial.
Okay. And then the last part was in terms of, you know, is there or will there be, still be a deficit of parking? Do we have a good sense, I know on the commuter side, we have a significant waiting list for Madison residents, so I don't know if you guys are addressing that. And then second, for all the rest of the people, really merchant and merchant customer parking, do we have a sense of how short we are and to what extent we still will be short after all this work is done?
We have, no, we don't have anything concrete. We have, we have numbers, there was an informal survey done last spring by one of the, one of the property owners, business owners, she went actually in every store. That made it look like there was a 400 to 500 merchant space deficit. But that didn't account for overlap or shift work or anything like that. So I think it's, it's far less than that. There are days, like you go on a Monday, Monday's not, I guess, a good example. Monday, there are no cars anywhere. Lunchtime in, in the downtown core, it's packed. You know, it's, it's kind of all over the place, and even if you, I drive by that, the lot three every day, and it's different every day. So there's a lot of, I think, you know, this is our best first bet, is to get all of this stuff that's been hanging out there, taken care of first, and then reevaluate it. Part of the follow-up will be to create a, a system of gathering data on all of this. Right, like right now, me driving by the parking lot isn't super scientific.
Not scientific.
But I, so I think that, that will all have to be incorporated in this going forward.
Again, it sounds like you did a ton of work, and this is sort of, I guess, our, what you might call low-hanging fruit, because it really is, and have a lot of cost involved. So I guess once this is in place, which will be sometime in, what, the next six or three months?
I'm, I'm hoping I, that it'll be in place within the next four, five months.
Okay. So after that, then we'll have to stop and take a look and then decide, do we need to go to the next level?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And part on the commuter parking is wanting to get the app in place so we can structure the regulations on the app and not the other way around, where we come up with ordinances and then a new app, and then we realize we went the wrong direction. So that's why we want to get that moving very quickly.
One question on the app, are we going to have something that's going to be able to let people know either where spaces are or whether a lot is full based on the number of people who've checked in for the day?
Probably not, because it's, obviously, it's not, there are some systems out there that do it on the, a true, you know, sensors on spots that show, but the, the challenge is you don't know whether that person that parked in your lot is there, went to the city for half a day, full day, or whatever. So you, you might know when people registered, but you don't know when they left. You can check in anytime you want, but you can never leave.
We would need like live streaming to achieve that.
Yeah. But, but that certainly is not a, you know, you know, yeah, that's not even, you know, that, that crazy of having, you know, strategically placed webcams that someone could go and take a quick look and see the status.
Thank you.
Carmella?
Carmella?
Lisa, thank you for all that work because parking has been, well, as long as I can remember, an issue and something to talk about. But heading back to the merchant parking, I think that we have a great concern with merchant parking, you know, taking up parking spaces that are actually, should be for customers and whatever. Is there, have you talked about some type of incentive to move some of that merchant parking over to, like what you say, like 14 spaces that are not used on Kings Road, et cetera? So, you know, I find that you always have to have some kind of incentive. There's businesses downtown that have, you know, like 15 people. Frank Iannaro, just, you know, he has, he has kids working in and out and he has to buy them, you know, a parking sticker, you know, which is very costly, you know, for them. So I don't know what the incentive could be, but I think that there always has to be an incentive.
We could, you know, one of the things we looked at is lowering the merchant parking fee. I mean, part of the problem now is not enough of them are actually purchasing permits. So other than the fact that Cindy knows every car, we don't have a really scientific way of tracking that either at this point. So we want to encourage them to buy the permits so we can track that. Frank happens to buy all his employees' tags, others don't. So it's sort of, you know, it's sort of a multi-pronged approach where we encourage, we educate, we can talk about incentive. The mayor suggested when you buy multiple permits, the cost goes down, so that encourages that purchase as well. We can think of, as part of the marketing campaign, we can certainly come up with some creative way to incentivize it. And unfortunately, you know, with the carrot comes the stick too, and we absolutely need to increase those fees. People are taking advantage of the system. And I think that once we pull that all together, I think we're going to make some headway.
And of course, everybody knows when Cindy is off.
I know. It was, it was, it was the Wild West when she was out for two months. It was a little crazy.
I'm not going to say when she's off in case.
Oh, yeah.
But also, I was down at Firehouse Apartments today. Now, part of that deal, when they were built, there were X amount, and I don't remember the number, of merchant parking.
Yes.
To satisfy the merchants. I have to tell you, I go by there and there is always parking there because the people who live there are not allowed to have, are actually not allowed to have a car and whatever. And it's such a terrible waste because that's a short walk to Cook Avenue parking lot.
That's on the list.
It is on the list, it is. And we, if anybody has any documentation, I was actually, I went to see Liz about that last week to see if we can't put our hands on yet anything that was, if there was anything in writing as far as the number of spaces.
I recall that one, that, yeah.
It's marked, you know, the spaces are marked.
It was, and then.
The housing authority.
Yeah, but I do remember, at least my recollection is when we sold that property to the housing authority, that we.
In that agreement.
So we're working on tracking that down.
We're looking for that for sure. The other thing, I just did an analysis for the committee and they haven't seen it yet, is the tenant parking. Because it had been suggested at the last committee meeting, you know, maybe tiering the tenant parking. So if we're going to ask them to leave the lot at 8:00 in the morning, 9:00 in the morning, whatever it is, so that a merchant can take that space, is that fair to that tenant? Should there be another tier of tenant parking? So I did an analysis, you know, trying to see who's parking where. I'm still waiting for a little bit of information, but there's only like 40 tenant parking spaces, parking permits been issued so far this year. And I don't have any sense of the timing, whether they're parking 24 hours a day, whether they're leaving to go to work in the morning. That's the last piece of that. But, you know, and I think that's something that's going to have to be evaluated. Do we, what's the priority? There's a limited amount of spaces and even if we wanted to add a garage or something, it's going to take years and millions and millions of dollars. So there's some, there's a lot of low hanging fruit and we're working our way through it all.
Maureen?
So I was educated by the Dominicans and one of my teachers always said, "We never guess, we always look it up." And it sounds very much like we are finally looking it up. We are actually accumulating all the data and all of the information that we need to make an informed decision regarding parking, which is, you know, something that really everybody who has a car feels they're an expert in. So I think we're, I think we're on the right track.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Lisa. Great, Dog Park, Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a brief presentation. I will keep it brief. Carmella, if I go over, just do the little watch movement or something like that. This has been presented to council before, so I'm going to go quickly through the actual Dog Park itself elements and really focus more on the support that we've garnered over five years for this and looking for the council's support. So years ago, there was a push to establish a fence to off-leash Dog Park in Madison where responsible owners and their well-behaved dogs can exercise and socialize in a clean and safe environment without endangering or disturbing people, property, or wildlife. So previously presented was this plan for the Dog Park in Memorial Park between the ice skating rink and the Madison Pool. Just some of the details there to be fenced in, a couple of little dog amenities. And really what it comes down to is it's a fence that we are requesting to put up, a fence around an existing picnic space that's already used for dogs, that dog owners use with dogs on leashes and off leashes, even though it's not allowed, and it is frequented often. So that's, that's the background of what the Dog Park is. It was previously presented last year. So what I'm here today is to come back and we had, the last presentation that John Taylor had given, there were questions from the committee, there were additional questions from the pool board. And here's a list of the basic, you know, the top eight questions that came back. The concern about urine flowing towards the pool. Parking in the pool lot. Proximity to the wetlands. The council had asked us to look at some alternative locations, including Bailey Ellard, Summer Hill, and Memorial Park between Sunny Vettel Fields and Memorial Park, Memorial Parking Lot. And the question came up, who will maintain the Dog Walk, or Dog Park? There was concerns from the pool board about their insurance if a dog got out and attacked someone on their property. Concerns of dogs getting loose near the pool and running into the pool. And a question came about Boy Scouts using the space currently for their annual camp out. So there were some other questions as well that we responded to, but these were the big ones. And so here is just the responses to that, just to show that we have, over the past five years and really the past few months, done our due diligence. In terms of the urine flowing towards the pool, the existing topography has all the water flowing away from the pool, from the dog space. Water does not flow uphill. As a landscape architect, it's the first thing you learn in school, that water cannot flow up the hill. So there, we, while it is a concern, yes, we've looked at the topography and that is, will not be the case. Parking in the pool lot, the, we have already said that we will now limit, we'll have signage that will limit saying during pool season, no Dog Park, parking allowed in the pool lot. It's actually more convenient due to the location of the entrance gate to park in Memorial Field Parking Lot where the ice skate rink is. It's actually more inconvenient to actually go all the way into the pool to go back to the entrance. Proximity to the wetlands, we've actually pulled any piece that was originally proposed years ago that was in the wetlands, we've actually pulled it out. And all the posts that are in the landscape, in the wetlands buffer are being, are not having concrete footings, they're putting, they're being placed, they're driven into the, so that if at any need, they need to be removed or taken away, they can do that. We did look at alternative locations, we had concerns about Bailey Ellard because of its, it's not really, even though I'm in that area of town, it's not really centrally located for walking for a larger population of the community. And it's also very exposed. It's out in the sun. There's a small strip that's along the railroad, but it's steeply sloped and there would meet a lot of tree clearing and grading. Summer Hill, the concern where's there was that it would need to be located in the lower section, the downhill section we'll say, not the hill, which puts it closer to neighborhoods. And it's also very limited parking, it's just tree parking there. And then the question about putting it in Memorial Park, actually the wetlands in that area, they actually bump up very close to Rosdale, so it's, the space is not large enough and you'd actually have to clear a lot of understory and trees in order to put it there. Who will be maintaining the Dog Walk? We've already had discussions with DPW and including it on their list of standard trash cleanouts for the trash receptacles that will be there and monitoring, as well as volunteers that have already, we have a list of 429 supporters that was submitted. And of that, almost half said that they're, or I'll have actually the number later, so I'm not going to say that number yet because I'm not quite sure. But there was a large amount that said they would volunteer, as well as we're looking to do a parks subcommittee of two or three members that can go and monitor, especially during the first one or two years that it's in place, to make sure that it's performing and it's being upkept and see if there's any changes to the programming. Pool board insurance, while we don't know the details, we weren't given the details of exactly what their insurance company had said to them, that was a concern that came to us. And our feeling is that we are now putting a fence around a space where dogs currently use, so if anything, we're actually making it safer because now dogs that are currently on leashes that could get away from their owners, or not on leashes that could very easily get away, are now being fenced in. And the gate that is being proposed is a standard Dog Park gate where there's a door in and a door out, so you can't open the door to go inside until the outside door is closed. And concern for the dog getting loose nearby, similar to the comment I just said in showing the gate. And lastly, the Boy Scouts using the space. The Boy Scouts are now required to actually have a freshwater source, which is not located in that space right now. However, if they were to do their camp out down the way by the baseball fields, there actually is a water source, or the MRC also has it. So we did also break down costs. This is, we have a very detailed cost analysis that's been presented before. This is the general cost breakdown of all the elements. And we will be applying for an open space, if we get the support, we'll apply for an open space grant to cover the 80% cost. We have been told that we have the 20% that will be needed, so when we submit, we'll have that list. And just in terms of support, it was first formally introduced back in 2014. We have over 429 signatures of support, and that's just from this Bottle Hill Day, previous Bottle Hill Days. We've had similar, you know, 350, I think it's the last one. I think we have a lot of supporters that are here this evening, maybe a show of hands, I don't know if that's allowed to do a show of hands, but there are a fair amount of supporters here. I do want to make it clear, I'm not a dog owner. I don't even like dogs. Right? I love dogs, right? But what I am is, and I'm here as a parks representative because I'm a supporter of the community using the space that the town has, right? This is, this, you know, just like a playground's great to bring families together, sporting fields are great to bring community together. A Dog Park is a space where maybe, you know, it brings a whole nother set of people, maybe they don't have kids, maybe they do, and it's an opportunity to bring people together. And we have, you know, over 100 of those supporters are pool members, I'm a pool member. 129 showed interest in volunteering for the park. Almost half showed of this list showed support that they would either help financially or with services to the space. And has full support of the Parks Advisory Committee, whose role it is really to promote and enhance Madison's parks and recreation areas. And I just did, you all have it, but I wanted to just kind of include, John sent it over to me and I didn't realize how many pages were. These are all the signatures.
It came in electronic.
I have the hard copy, but it was a lot of signatures. And so it's something, like I said, that's been going on for years now.
Yeah, today.
As from a parks standpoint, we see this as a great opportunity to get more community members engaged in our parks. A lot of our spaces are underused and I think if we bring more attention to some of these spaces and people use it more, we have opportunity to enhance other parts of the parks because we've got to kind of get people excited about it.
Questions for Tom or Tom, Maureen?
Yeah, I just want to, I want to reiterate one thing. It's, when we talk about recreation, I think a lot of people immediately think about soccer and Little League and football. But recreation is really encouraging the whole community to get out and use space. And we talk about creating, we talk about creating community and that, that does happen at the MRC and it does happen at the Little League fields. You see the same people over and over again and you finally get their name. A Dog Park, it's not just people with kids. I mean, I don't have children anymore, but I have a dog. And I might go to the Dog Park and see Melanie, who I have never met before in my life, and we could, we could start up a conversation. And we'd start, we'd start, we'd start weaving this fabric that is so important to, to being a community, knowing each other.
Carmella?
You know, for the last two years, we've talked about this at parks. And it's something like five years that this has been going on. One of the, one of the things that I know will happen is people want their dogs to run, especially this time of the year. You know, the dogs are absolutely as confined as, as the people are. And today I saw dogs running in James Park up on, up on Park Avenue. There's always dogs running in the Lucy D Fields, you know, because it's good wide open spaces. But I just want to say, I think that you guys have done a great job. Thank you, John. John just kept on, he didn't budge from this. So I think it's an enhancement to this town. I think it's something that has been needed and I think that you guys will do a great job. And I, I appreciate, I don't have a dog anymore unfortunately, but I appreciate all the work that you've done because we all sit here as representative of 16,000 people and everybody has their own feelings about certain things, whether they like parks or they like trees or the environmental commissioner or whatever. And there's a good segment of people in this town that have dogs. And so I congratulate you, this is great. I think it's very clear, it's very concise. And I for one will ask each one of my fellow council people to say, "Go ahead, get your 20% and go to open space now."
Are there questions or comments? John?
Yeah, having been involved in this just a little bit last year tangentially, I just want to say that I congratulate you on addressing the concerns. I can't imagine that there are any more concerns that can be manufactured to oppose this. I think you've addressed them adequately. As a matter of fact, I think there are probably some other answers to the concerns that you have beyond what you have, but what you have is fine. So you did a very good job and I congratulate you. And I'm with you, Carmella.
Right, and so, any other comments before I, so what you're looking for right now is an endorsement of this project and that's based on the location, the fact you've addressed some of the concerns and with the endorsement, it's not the final step, but it means, okay, now you can go and start doing your fundraising for the 20%. You can have additional and further conversations with the Madison Community Pool, which is also a treasure for Madison, so we can, and we can hopefully work with the, address some of their insurance concerns, anything else that may come up. And then it would come back, it would go to the open space after the 20%, then come back for this, to this council for a final approval. As you mentioned with the. As you mentioned with the wetlands area and all that, that the only structured area is the gate itself, the rest of it are, the rest of the fence is not set in concrete, and so if, you know, we find that people aren't using it, that area could be fully restored to what it was before, but I don't think that'll happen, though, Tom, I'm with you, Tom, I'm not a big dog person, so I will be on the outside of the fence, but I would support it. So what I would like from the council is a motion to endorse this project with, as I just said, location and the full concept that was just presented.
I'd like to move that there.
Do I have a second?
One second.
And further discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you for your work and the work of the Parks Committee. Thank you all.
2019 municipal budget schedule and open space quarterly report.
Thank you, Mayor. I find it to be an exciting topic, but I don't expect any applause. I'm here to talk about the budget. First, we'll talk a little bit about the agenda for this evening, which is discuss the annual budget process, review the 2018 open space trust fund report, we do have a pro forma for 2019, and then we'll talk a little bit about the five-year capital plan. I have some slides here that are oldies but goodies, and I'm not really going to talk about them too much, really more to have them available for people who go on Rosenet and look at it, so, but I'll talk real briefly. The strategic planning is really where the whole budget starts. We're going to talk about open space, then capital, then utilities, then municipal budget, then department operating, we'll kind of go around that circle a couple of times to make sure everything fits and everything works. There are three entities that we talk about during the budget process, the current fund, which is the main budget, the electric utility and the water utility, those are three separate budgets, they're all melded together, but we talk about them separately, but they're melded together in the municipal budget document that ultimately gets submitted to the state. There are three capital accounts associated, one with each of those aforementioned operating budgets. What's important to note is that in each one of those operating budgets, there is a line in there called the capital. That money gets taken from the operating every year and put into the capital budget, the coffee can, where we end up spending money as we need. All the capital ordinances, or the capital spending that is done, is done via ordinance. So you vote on the budget, you're really voting on the operating budget. When you're looking at the five-year capital plan, you're really just looking at the plan and making sure, does this fit within the framework of the budget? As you know, I've always, we call it budget, but I think it's better to call it a spending plan, because once you all vote on these different lines, that's pretty much it. That's how much we have for Rock Salt. If we don't have enough money for Rock Salt, we'll either have to transfer it to another, from another source, or we may have to declare an emergency, so we always tend to have a little more in some of those lines. So the proposed hearing schedule, I did send this out to council last week. We're looking at January 14th this evening to talk about the schedule, the open space trust fund and the five-year plan. January 28th, we'll come with the utility budget review, and the electric utility superintendent Jim will give his presentation. The electric utility budget, or the utilities budget, we'll talk about specifically on January 28th. There may be some refinements, and as you know, we kind of merge those all together when we talk about the budget in general. The next item for discussion will be February 11th, which will be discussion of the surplus, use of surplus, municipal and electric surplus, and our kind of first pass at the operating budget. All the departments, all the expenses, the salaries, bond debt, joint meeting, insurance, and things like that, that'll be our first discussion there. February 25th, we'll bring all the department heads in, as we have done in the past, and have the department heads come and talk to you this evening. You see the five-year capital plan, you all have, almost all of you have departments that have capital budget items in that five-year capital plan, so it gives you time between now and the department hearing on the 25th to have conversations with your department heads, if they have any budget asks on the capital side. On February 25th, we'll have police and fire and health and library and engineering and others come in and talk about their department goals, their department hopes for upcoming year, and their accomplishments for this past year, and their capital. March 11th is going to be kind of the big revised budget discussion, because we've now kind of completed the big circle and now we want to circle back to the municipal budget. I had suggested in the email that went out, that council may want to consider an alternate date of either Monday the 4th, Tuesday the 5th, or Wednesday the 6th, to have it as a dedicated budget hearing, because I envision that will be a fairly robust conversation, and the hope is after that conversation, you say, okay, Jim, go forth and create the state budget document, and that state budget document thing gets created, introduced on the schedules, that it would be introduced on the 25th, and then adopted 28 days later, which is the amount of time the state requires, to be adopted on April 22nd. Asking for a little more time by having that special budget hearing, as I said, gives us more time to discuss it specifically and not have a part of a council meeting. It also gives a little more time to prepare the state budget document. This year, we hit the lottery, once every three years, we're lucky that we get to have the state come in and do a deep dive review of our budget, of our budget. The other two years were under self-exam, this year we're not. So, and on top of that, we have a new system called FAST, which is not really correct acronym, because it's not FAST, it's a very slow process of electronically putting in the budget and giving it to the state a different way. So typically, I prepare the budget four to five different ways for you all to see it. I now have a sixth way that the state wants me to present it to them. So just more fun in February and March for me. So anyway, so that is the proposed schedule. I wanted to see if there were any questions or concerns, if there was thought that the 4th, 5th, or 6th made sense to have a special hearing, and ask and answer.
So, yeah, well, let's, I think what we should do is at least nail down the special, and we can always, as we progress, if it's not necessary, pull it away. Pull out the 5th, because that's a planning board night. Leaving the 4th or 6th, any, for council members, any?
No. Either is fine.
Okay. First Monday typically is fairly good.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's, let's reserve the March 4th, 7:00 PM.
Thank you, I appreciate that. This is my daughter on her birthday. So, we're ready, we'll go right to the open space trust fund report. This was a report that was forwarded to council. Open space trust fund has a number of inflows, revenue inflows and a number of appropriation outflows. This should look similar to what we saw earlier in the year, we try to give a report three to four times a year. Tax levy for 2018 was 641,000. Field rentals and user fees were 88,000. Funds reserved from a green acres grant that were brought back in, they were put in a coffee can off to the side in reserve, and we brought them back in to pay debt, or 145,000. Interest is, I should have been, had a better description there, that's the bank interest, the amount of money that sits in the bank. We earn a little over 1.5% on that now, so that's $13,000, and that's a little more than normal, because interest rates have gone up, short-term interest rates have gone up. Madison Little League had a contribution towards ordinance 43, 2018, and then out of the sky, thanks to Roy Redmond and a surprise to most of us, was the fact that we actually did finally get an NJEDA grant as a reimbursement for Bailey Ellard remediation. I think Pat asked, do we have any other things that are going to fall out of the sky? I don't think so. But the $409,000 was a pleasant surprise, because obviously we did Bailey Ellard five years ago, but we finally did get that money, just got notified, congratulations, you're getting the money, and a month later we got the check. So that was a big surprise for us. The outflows, I'm not going to go through them one at a time, you can see just a debt, common areas for the road, that's jointly maintained, that is maintained by Gail Rockefeller Group, but utilized by us as part of our agreement with them. And then all the other items are predominantly items that the council has voted on, recognized via resolution or ordinance, what was, what was voted on and in the outflows. At the bottom is the reserve funds, there's $100,000, which was a gift that was donated to the trust for, and restricted for remediation land acquisition and Aqua for Recharge. There's 355,000 left in that green acres grant that we're using to pay down the MRC land acquisitions. So the 145 up above was 500, and then we took 145 out, so there's 355 left over. So the top, I apologize, I'm talking, talking, looking at this here, but it's still fairly clear there. The top talks about inflows, the bottom talks about outflows, the reserved section is more like a balance sheet. The top section, inflows and outflows, is more of an income statement that happens over a period of time. So as of December 31st, that's the amount of reserve funds that we had restricted into three different pots, for green acres, for the reserve skinning, and for the gift.
So Jim, one question there. The top two are definitely what I would consider to be legally restricted, either by law or by contract, but the last one is not. I mean...
You could, I mean, council voted on that at the last meeting, you could vote to un...
Yeah, so in the future, any council can repurpose that. So in essence, the available balance at the end of the year, in terms of what I would call unreserved, is actually a million dollars.
It would be the 761 and the 278.
Correct.
Sure.
Okay.
So any other questions on that?
Any questions? I think we're, all right.
So decided it made sense to pull a pro forma together. I had done, you know, multi-year pro forma when we were talking about the turf reskining and everything, and it's already changed a little bit for two reasons. One is the user fees we had thought might change, and it doesn't look like they're going to change as quickly as we thought. Two, $100,000 just showed up from the NJEDA. So I did just a pro forma for one year, and apologize for the fonts causing a problem on the slide, but I can read through that. The pro forma for 2019 has the tax levy, has the field rental and user fees at $80,000, the funds coming from below, from the reserve of the green acres to help pay the land debt, and then the interest. And the outflows have the ones that we all know, the debt, the common area maintenance, rental and user fees that I'm assuming council will continue to transfer down into the coffee can for the reskining, additional funds, and I included a line for additional funds to reserve for reskining, and there's a typo. I had $50,000 on there, but in reality, if we base it off of this pro forma, that number should be $90,000, because we thought we were going to get $130,000 just in user fees, and we're only at $40,000. So that number should be a little higher. Projects are whatever projects council votes on, every year there are projects coming to council, and the final is the additional reserve for the new turf field that was discussed at the council meeting in September to possibly do that. So I put those there as placeholders, projects and reserve for new turf field project and the reserving for reskining, because that's something that council's going to have to vote on. And so in addition, it's not showing up great on here because of the font, the Hartley, there are multiple 2019 projects that are just kind of out there, that may come up to the open space trust fund, may come up to council, and that are viable and very much worth considering. One is the Hartley Dodge Memorial renovation, there's been a lot of talk about that, and I think we're obviously looking to get grant funding and finalize that project and try to get that project moving, that's close to a million dollars. Dodge Field, the lights there are past their useful life. We, every year, are spending 15 to 25,000 on maintenance, when we could be doing a full renovation for a little over 200,000. So we think that's something, we understand the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts has some projects coming to us. I estimated that we would be giving them up to $100,000, depends on what the county gives them in grant funds, but they have over $200,000 in projects. And then there is the athletic field improvements, the field people coming and the recreation advisory coming and asking for more funds to renovate the grass fields. And then finally, MRC remediation, there are areas at the MRC that are behind fence, and if the RAC and open space come to a decision as to what could be used there, that's obviously a very large spend, but would be certainly appropriate to use out of the open space trust fund. So, are there any questions on that?
Austin?
We should also include the dog park and the MRC playground, that's always been on there.
Yes. Where's the dog park? So apologize. Write that down.
Any other questions or comments? Deb?
Does the reserve for reskining that's 408,000, is that reflective of this extra 40,000 you put up at the top?
That is an excellent question. So the error on the top is also the error on the bottom, so it needs to be increased by $40,000, so that will be 448, 502 on the reserve for reskining. That keeps us on track to do the reskining in 2021, 2022, which is when we think we're going to need to do it, based on the experts and others coming to us and saying the useful life of that field. And a dollar, I apologize, and a dollar amount of $1 million is what we think it's going to cost.
Yep. So I'll make the same comments I made last year, and I will make every year, because I still have the same concerns. Number one, I think when we're bringing this money in, we should be looking to use it more in sync with when the money comes in. You know, my first preference is we start to look more closely at these projects down here before we start pulling out another 500 or 600,000 out of the fund and just sticking it in a coffee can. I think when people give us this money, they expect that we're going to try to utilize it in a relatively short period of time. Because my second choice would be, if we're not going to use it in a short period of time, then we should reduce the open space tax. My least favorite choice is what we're doing, which is setting aside the better part of a million dollars, because when you look at the 800 and almost $50,000 you're going to possibly have reserved by the end of the year, you add it to the 469,000 that you say we could end the year in, you're talking about over a million and a quarter dollars that we have sitting around that's essentially unreserved, as far as I'm concerned, and a fund that we're only really putting 600,000 a year into for tax purposes. So, you know, I still think we need to take a harder look at the projects that are being proposed, and seeing if we should be doing them now, rather than, you know, just sticking the money into a mattress. I don't think that's what the people are giving us the money for.
Maureen?
Well, I mean, a previous, a previous council decided to immediately build the MRC, which meant we have debt service that we are servicing, and it would be kind of silly if we didn't re-turf the field that we're going to be paying for for the next 20 years. This is, this is like, I approach this like, like anything, I have to, like anything I do for my family, I wanted to put a, I, you know, I wanted to put an addition on my house, and so I, you know, I saved up, I saved up the money, I put it in the coffee can, and when I was, when I had enough, I was able to do that. I want to buy a car. You know, the Thursday morning club needed to rebuild the community house, and rather than build it and then ask for money later, they raised the 2.5 million dollars. It's a whole lot easy, it's really, really hard to get money for something if it's already built. And I think, I think by, you know, I think we're actually, we're actually doing a fiduciary, we are upholding our fiduciary responsibility to the community by making sure that these funds are available to maintain recreation, open space, and our historic, our historic buildings.
I think, just to reinforce that, by nature of the purpose of the open space fund, which could be purchasing land, preserving historic structures, reinvesting our project in our recreational infrastructure, potential of redoing the historic restoration of the East Wing, these are all large ticket items which require building up funds. Obviously, as you do a pro forma and look five, 10 years out, and you're in that time span, not spending the money down, that's a good time to ask the question of, are we doing the right thing? But as we look at this, it certainly looks like we're going to be building up and then spending it down, and building it up and spending it down. Any other questions?
Pat?
I'll just make, you know, the same comment I made last time, which is, I do, I did the same thing, I did two additions on my house, in both cases I saved up. In both cases, I saved up. But I separate the way I operate my personal finances in a way we do government, because really, the person who's we're taxing this year is not necessarily the same person who's going to be here five years or 10 years from now. So whether we're taking money, setting aside money, electric utility or here, I think we need to try to make sure that the money we're collecting is being spent more contemporaneously with the timeframe that we're collecting it, not many, many years out. So that is a concern that I've always had. And if, you know, we did borrow the money to purchase the property as well in a couple of cases, and we were still able to get grants after the fact, so I don't think that necessarily prohibits us from doing that. Sorry.
I don't think it's anything you said, Pat.
Maureen?
So I agree, we should separate our personal finances from council finances, but our personal lives and experiences color how we approach, color how we approach something. You know, in, well, I still am. I'm a professional beggar. I raise funds.
These are better.
For nonprofits, yeah. I raise money for nonprofits. I write grants. It's really hard, and you cannot, you cannot, you cannot depend on the largess of others to do some of these projects, because people don't see it in their interest. And you talk about, you talk about, you want, you're taxing, you're taxing me right now, and, you know, five years from now, I could be in Charlotte, North Carolina. It's still, it's still an investment, as far as I'm concerned, because all of the money that we've spent up to this point using open space money has improved my real estate, has improved my investment. And so if we were, if we were, if we were to stop investing in Madison, theoretically, my investment in my property and my taxes would go down. It's just, it's not, and it's not just, we can't look at this as self-interested in that I put the money in, and so therefore I should, I should get the use of it. We can't, we can't approach it that way. We can't be self-interested. We have, we have to look at this as a community and building community, and everybody, everybody doing what, you know, what is not cool, but doing what is right. And doing what is right is putting money away for fields and putting money away for dog parks and, you know, putting money away to protect our aquifer. I mean, in a way, that is self-interest.
And Deb, and then Carmella?
Isn't there a happy medium where we're putting some of the money away for bigger projects and doing things like the dog park or the playground or those smaller, more immediate, you know? And I guess I equate it with the school board. The seniors, like it or not, and they don't like it, pay taxes for their, for, when they have no kids, they're still paying the school tax, just the same way that in, you know, 15 years when my kids, or 11 years when my kids are out of the high school and whatever, and out of college, I'll still be paying the school board. So I think it, it works both ways, but I think as long as we're balancing, doing some immediate things with it so that people are getting that immediate, hey, this is what we're doing, but look, we're also planning long-term, so we're not taking out debt so that we can reskin or do whatever with athletic fields or Hartley Dodge or whatever it might be, I think it's a happy medium.
So we got Carmella and then Astri?
I just want to make a suggestion. It seems that, you know, part of the problem is, is that you think that the, these projects are going to be going on and on and on for years, and we're just going to be accumulating lots of money. Maybe what Open Space Committee needs to do is, you know, part of their process is say, how long is this going to take? I mean, we all have, when your department heads come here, they have a project, they have to give you and identify time of beginning and time of ending, right, Bob Vogel?
Vogel.
Yeah. Right? So maybe that's what we need, okay, is where are we with Hartley Dodge Memorial renovations? We all know that we have to talk about it. We know something has to be done. So how long is that going to take us? At least, I think if everybody had, you know, a concept of when this stuff is going to be done, it might be easier. I have no problem with putting the money aside. When we started this, we never thought that we were going to be paying for the MRC, and thank God for the open space tax. You know, we now have that money to be paying for those fields. Okay? I mean, the fields were something that was not going to cost the taxpayer a dime, and I remember that so clearly being said to us, and we bought into it. And you know what? It's the greatest, one of the greatest things that we've done here in Madison, but the council took that responsibility and said, okay, we have this open space tax, now we're going to start paying off the debt. And we've done that. And I think we should be proud of, you know, something like that. But I'm thinking that maybe it's just too kind of open-ended, you know? We know that, you know, this dog park, they're going to, they're going to want to get it done by the spring. That's my concept. I would encourage them to do it that quickly and whatever. So if we kind of know what the time schedules are, maybe that'd be a little bit easier. What says you?
I'm going to let Astri talk, and then I'll. Does she have raised her hand?
And then we can wrap up the ping pong match, but.
He doesn't want to take any chances.
I think in the history of the open space trust fund, we've been conservative in how we proceeded, because we did have the debt that Carmella was talking about. We now see that with the, you know, the revenues that we're getting, that we now have more opportunity to, you know, structure how we do the projects in the open space trust fund. And clearly, it was a disappointment not to get the county grant for the East Wing of Hartley Dodge Memorial. We did get a state grant, but the realization is, you know, we need to finish this historic building. So I think that we can definitely proceed and start figuring out how we're going to do it and who's going to occupy it. And then with the fields, it's like Maureen said, it's an investment in our, our homes and our community, and it's time. I mean, our recreation program keeps growing and growing, growing. We need a turf field. And the next step will be, I've spoken to the school board president, but we need to sit down and see what we can do, because the most ideal property would obviously be right next to MRC. So I think we're, I guess I would say, we can be more structured at this point, whereas before, where I think we were very cautious, because we knew that we had the debt that we had to pay down, and we weren't sure how projects were going to play out, and we always wanted to make sure we had reserve of money for the possible project that came up for land acquisition. And that, you know, it just comes up when it comes up. And if it's a property that has great aquifer recharge area, you know, in today's world, we should be purchasing that property to save our water supply. Thank you.
Okay, and we'll try to wrap it up here.
Yeah, so I mean, I do agree with Carmella about the structure, because it's something I've talked about. And again, we, you know, we, Jim listed a whole bunch of projects that you can't really see there, but they're $1.3 million, not including MRC remediation in total. So I'd like to really see those things vetted out before we start, again, sticking money aside for something that may happen down the road, especially the new turf field. I really would like to see something more formally agreed with, with the Board of Ed, because that's a significant project. We've talked to them in general terms, we've given them some information, but I think before we set any of that money aside, we really should be making sure we have a full commitment from them with regards to moving that forward. So again, it's, I understand the whole idea of saving for the future. I have always hoped that we, and supported investing in the future. Sometimes it's just a matter of how you pay for it and who pays for it and when they pay for it.
Very good. Thank you. We'll move on to the five-year capital.
Thank you, Mayor. Bob Vogel's going to come up here, but I promise that he doesn't have to talk unless you have specific questions. So the five-year capital plan was presented to council back in December. We're presenting a slightly revised one here. And again, the purpose is to really look, in my opinion, the purpose tonight is to really look at the main number of 4.6 million and say, can we do that? And I can tell you that I think we can do that, because we have over a million and a half dollars already in the general capital fund, already set aside, because we had a certain amount there, and then we did a significant amount of cancellation of ordinances, and we had some grant funds that come in. If you recall, when we do roads, Bob Vogel was very good about getting DOT dollars for certain roads, those grant funds come in and replenish projects. So while the total amount here is 4.66 million, I think if we stay the course in the operating budget with 3.8 million coming out of operating and going into general capital, I think we can continue this trend of four to four and a half million dollars over the next few years, which is what we have projected here. I think we need to do a better job. I'm going to ask Bob to do a better job refining out 2022 and 2023. I don't think two years from now, we're going to be talking about those numbers being 2.7 million. Maybe we will. But at least we're getting the department heads to be looking out more than six months, a year, or two years. So with that, I want to, if you have any specific questions, Bob Vogel can come up here and we can do our best to answer them.
Jim, one quick question. When you look back at 18, 19, 17, 16, is it possible to come up with how much we actually spent in capital versus what we budgeted? And that would be in terms of the money we were able to recapture, either because we didn't do projects, or more importantly, for projects that came in under budget, and also grant money that, you know, we got after the fact that we took on in the budget, the full burden, but then brought it down? Because I'd really like to get a sense of what percentage of that we really end up spending on average.
Yeah, I think, I think we can do that.
Okay, because when you say we have a million and a half in surplus, or whatever, in the general capital fund, and we want to spend 4.6, I struggle to figure out how you're going to be able to spend four and a half next year unless you're somehow able to carry that, you know, million, million and a half forward.
So I anticipate there's another, almost every year, we, this past year, we canceled hundreds of thousands of dollars of ordinances, because as you said, we do a good job, you know, we appropriate X amount for a project, but we don't want to spend all of it, we want to spend what we need to to get the job done. So I think hundreds of thousands of dollars every year are getting canceled. And then I think every year, we're asking and getting in DOT dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars back, or even a smaller amount of money like for Plain Street with the water main line that we did there. That was a county grant that we received there. So we have approximately 1.8 million. I know we have about 300,000 that's going to be canceled, so that's up to 2.2 million. If we put 3.8 million in next two years, I think we're good at 4.5. And I do think next year, if for some reason it comes in, boy, we're a little tight, we could look to refine or push some of these numbers out. As you know, every year, we're doing X amount of slip lining of the stores. We could just reduce that amount a little bit, or reduce other lines a little bit and make it all work.
Deb?
Just a quick question. What is, there's an asterisk that says exclude CBD parking lot improvements. What is CBD?
Central Business District is what Lisa talked about. So there's potential small improvements, there's potential large improvements that could come down the pipe there. And I think that it's such an early development stage, we don't know what that number is going to be, how it's going to be funded. So we kind of just put that in a, hey, this is, this is out there. Similar to the fire trucks. We've been talking about fire trucks for five years. They were out at 20, they were, five years ago, they were in, they were in 2019, and now they finally creeped along, and now 2019 is here, and we're paying for, we're taking half of money from 2019 and 2020 and going to be purchasing two fire trucks in 2020.
Pat?
So to what Deb said, I did ask this question a month ago. When will we know what the parking lot costs are going to be? Because we're, are we going to try to fit it into this year's budget somehow?
I don't, I don't think we're going to try to fit it into this year's budget, because I think any work that we would be doing on the parking lots, that would be the significant ones. Lisa talked about some of the small ones that were very inexpensive, that we would probably fit in the road reconstruction or in the mill and overlay ordinance. But larger one would not even be considered until 2020, because I think the concept would be to do that over the summer, and without plans now, there's no way we're doing it over the summer.
But if, are we expecting, when you say a million dollars, are you talking about a million for all of them, or just some number of them?
I think that's just a very, very broad placeholder.
That would be all? Okay. And I'm assuming you'd phase those over years? There's a list down here of all these parking lots?
Yeah.
Okay, so A, B, C, D, E, F. And we wouldn't, we wouldn't be doing them all in one year, Bob, would we?
Bob, if you can step up to the microphone.
I can just say Bob's.
Start the clock, Mayor. Start the three minutes.
So, Pat, I mean, the, Jim is right that it was a broad overview of all the parking lots. We don't have design plans for anything done yet. They're all concepts, but if you reconstruct all, all the parking lots that were listed in the central business district, you're talking north of a million dollars. From what I've heard, as things develop, there's an awful lot that we can do without a major reconstruction. And so I have a feeling that we're going to be well within that billion dollars, and certainly if it's only one parking lot we bite off for this year, probably closer to a quarter million.
Well, I mean, the Cookout Lot needs work, and it also needs to be reconfigured. So that one, we're going to be tackling, I'm assuming, in the next two years. The other lots, are they in need of as much work, or is it more a matter of trying to economize the spaces?
It's more economy of spaces, yeah.
So you're not looking at major reconstruction?
Cookout is our major project.
And the other is a creation of a new merchant parking spot that we're working on through partnerships, or to come on that.
Okay. It's just, you know, again, a million dollars is a scary number to just put it as a footnote.
Didn't have much to go on at that point, Pat?
Maureen?
So I think as far as capital improvements are concerned, we have very short memories, because part of what we're doing is playing catch-up from years when we didn't have the money to put into capital improvements. And as anybody who has driven around town on the roads, and I know lots of people have complained about potholes and things like that, well, we've worked very hard on the roads, and now something like 60% of the roads have been improved. So it's a scary, it's a scary number, and, you know, we are, we are, we are charged as the representatives to make sure that the taxes are kept, you know, increases in taxes are kept to a minimum, but we're also charged to maintain the physical plant of Madison. And so, you know, maintaining the physical plant and the cars and the trucks and the fire trucks, all that, you know, that adds up to a couple million dollars a year, unfortunately.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Pat?
One other note, I just realized you're doing Chato theory, but just a small section of it. Could you guys take a close look at that road and think maybe about going a little further?
Certainly. We've gone down to the first intersection with, just past the Housing Authority property. So there's one intersection.
It says here Park de Bello, so that's like one block.
Yeah, looking at it again, as I was putting numbers together, I thought the next intersection would be better.
Okay, thank you. That would be better.
And that's one of the reasons why we've shifted, you know, two key things we've done with our road work. One is appropriating the money in our first meeting of the new year, or at least introducing the ordinance, so we can get ahead of most other towns and get our bidding, bid documents on the, on the street. And the other is have it, you know, broad enough so that we can add a block if bid's coming well, and we can do more than we had anticipated.
Worked out very well.
Yep. So we have, the ordinances one and two will be appropriating the money for the reconstruction and mill and overlay road construction. Thank you very much. Well done. Since this is the first regular business meeting of the new year, there are no ordinances for hearing, and so we move on to invitations for discussion. This is an open topic. You may comment on anything. Step up to lectern, state your name, your address. Keep your comments to three minutes if you can, but I will give you a grace and ask you to end at four. to end at four. Claire, welcome.
Hi, I'm Claire Whitcomb. I live at 12 Fairwood Road. I'm also Chair of the Environmental Commission. I'm going to be super, super fast. I was really fascinated by this whole parking discussion, and I know that Jim and Lisa are working on possibly some electric vehicle grants, but right now, there's a Volkswagen month, you know, that whole settlement thing. You can get 100% grant to pay for electric vehicle charging stations for government-owned property. Now, I don't know where the heck you'd put those things. That's a whole different conversation. But I do feel like that any parking discussion that addresses the future should at least consider that, have it be part of the discussion. If it's not going to work now, when is it going to work? This guy came, Carsten Witrup, gave us a presentation that was like 60 slides about how important this is. And there's 55 electric vehicles being registered every month in Morris County, and Chatham Borough is putting in electric vehicle charging stations, and it enhances the quality of our town and makes you sustainable, yada, yada, yada. I'm done. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Claire. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Yes.
Richie Feldman, Luanaque Way. I just want to know, when could we reintroduce the three ordinance? I've been waiting for 35 years.
Okay.
Eleven years since the last one.
Okay. And what we do with our comments is ask any questions and make any comments, and after you sit down, we'll answer your, answer your questions. So if you want to add any other comments or background.
Yes, I would. I'd just like to just make a statement here that between the extremes in weather, the new diseases because of that, insect infestations that arborists and our shade tree know about, we are losing trees, a lot of trees. I have seen developers from other towns, not Madison, come in and strip property. This has happened down on Luanaque Way. I think there's 1,000 feet that is totally naked now. The excuse was the trees were unhealthy, which is not true. And recently, in the last few months, on the, I believe it's the corner of Hillside and Prospect, a property was stripped of trees unnecessarily. These are healthy trees. I guess the point is, is that things are speeding up in our climate change, and we all love our town so much. Everything I've heard here tonight is about the love of our town. We have to do this. Certainly, you know that Chatham has done it and Summit has done it. There are 10 inches diameters, there's 16-inch diameters. We have to have some type of ordinance here. And I just want to make a comment about Drew University. As we probably all know, Drew University is in trouble. And every time they sell a piece of property, it's stripped. They will be selling more property. They have a lot of property in Madison. There has to be some ordinance. I thank you.
Thank you very much. So we have our council liaison to Shade Tree, Maureen, so she will, no need to...
Yeah, no, I'm actually, I'm meeting 9:30 tomorrow morning, so I will take your concerns with me.
Perfect response. Thank you. So we will, and I know they've been having discussions on it from our last year's liaison has been reporting that, so thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Kathy?
Kathy Daly, West End Avenue. I actually, I brought copies of a letter that you all received, except for Deb, so if I could take just a second to hand them out. You already...
Just bring them up to the clerk.
Sure.
When you're...
You all received these back in August after the dog park proposal was first heard, and it's a letter from all the Boy Scout, not all the Boy Scout leaders in town, but all the Boy Scout leaders in town who are available to sign. So just a moment. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And it's just a one-page letter. Hopefully, I'll be able to read it within three minutes. Dear Madison Council members, during the August 13 Madison Borough Council meeting, you heard a proposal for a dog park to be built in Madison. As you know, the proposed location of the dog park is the picnic area adjacent to the ice rink field. Over the years, that picnic area has been and continues to be an important camping resource for Madison's scouting programs. Without commenting on the merits of a dog park, we would like to provide some feedback to you about how the loss of this camping area will impact the scouting programs in Madison, specifically Cub Scout PAC 7, Cub Scout PAC 124, and Cub Scout PAC 226. Camping is an important component of scouting. Every survey on the subject indicates that children who participate in camping activities stay in scouting programs longer than children who do not camp. Many times, a child's first camp out is also the first camping experience for the adult who accompanies them. It is always an exciting adventure, and the experiences of setting up a tent for the first time and trying out a new sleeping bag can be daunting for the entire family. All the PACs in Madison recognize this, and we scout leaders have come to realize that it is much easier to try camping overnight when you know that your home is only a five-minute walk or drive away. For the last couple of decades, the picnic area adjacent to the ice rink field has been the site of annual spring campouts for Madison's Cub scouting programs. Scouts pinch tents in the clearing near the picnic area, and parent volunteers use the built-in grill at that site to prepare dinner. Later in the evening, a campfire is held at the brick fire pit, which was constructed about eight years ago as an Eagle Scout project. Each of our scouting units, our respective annual in-town campouts typically have the highest participation rate of any of our camping events. We are concerned that dedicating this space for a dog park will make the ice rink field an unsuitable location for camping. Scouts would no longer be able to place tents, cook, or picnic in the secluded and shaded clearing, and the added traffic of dogs and their owners would diminish the adventurous nature of the camping experience. Before the Borough Council approves a dog park at that site, we respectfully ask that you please consider that, the impact that the loss of this camping site will have on the scouting youth and families in Madison. We request that you work with Madison's Fire Department and Recreation Department to identify and prepare an alternative location within the borough that's appropriate for camping.
What minute?
A suitable and safe location would preferably be fairly secluded and include a grill, picnic tables, and shade. To comply with scouting guidelines for youth of Cub scouting age, it will also need to include a relatively flat and clear expense for pitching tents, access to clean water source, access to toileting facilities, and the ability to build a fire ring for a fairly large campfire. The picnic area adjacent to the ice rink field is the only site in Madison that presently meets all those requirements. And then it's signed by the scout leaders who signed it. So thank you for your time. I was not here, I apologize. All the Boy Scouts in town meet on Monday evenings at 7:30, you might know. So I apologize that I wasn't here for that part of the discussion. So maybe you could even fill me in, if you don't mind, on how that went. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for sharing that again, Kathy, and we will pass also on to the Parks Committee for their consideration. And the council did approve in concept moving forward, they did dog park in that area. That is not the final vote. It's just the approving the concept so they can go to the fundraising phase and also work with some of the other issues that have come up, such as this.
Thank you for the update.
Yep. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please step forward.
Olalaco 25 Greenwood Avenue. One time, I was a PAC leader of PAC 124. My son went through sleeping in that area, and it was memorable. Also, I'm on the Parks Committee and have been in favor of that area becoming the dog park. I suggest that what the scouts could do is take a look at the MRC. The Boy Scout project was installing all of those trails up there. There is also, the nice part about being down there at the skating room area is there were bathrooms, there was some shelter there and easy parking because the young scouts, many of them didn't make it through the night. You could hear the cars start up and... Plenty of parking up at the MRC. The trails were done. There are bathrooms right up there by the fields. It would be an easy area. It's a, it's a, a nice wooded area that would be a different, when the boys go up to Philmont, the big scout camp, they have to really camp in the woods. And certainly, if they tried it out up at the MRC area, there's areas that they could clear, there's trails that they could work on, that type of thing. And I would ask that they would consider using what is already an area where the Boy Scouts have put many hours of labor into a project. Thank you.
Paul, thank you for your suggestion. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. Will the clerk please read the statement related to introduction of ordinances?
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading. Have a hearing date set for January the 28th, 2019. It will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading and ask the Borough Clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 1, 2019, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $1,068,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the 2019 road reconstruction projects, related work and miscellaneous projects.
Mayor, I move ordinance 1 dash 2019.
I second. Any council discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ordinance 2 dash 2019.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $880,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the 2019 milling and overlay project.
Mayor, I move ordinance 2 dash 2019.
Second. Any council discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey? Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discretion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move Resolutions 41, 2019 through R 16, 2019, and removing R 55. I second.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discretion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move Resolutions 41, 2019 through R 16, 2019, and removing R 55. I second.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
There is no unfinished business. Approval of vouchers. Will the clerk please read the voucher register?
For the current fund, $4,964,941.78. General capital fund, $163,556.45. The electric operating fund, $726,025.92. Electric capital fund, $19,369.58. Water operating fund, $34,735.19. The water capital fund, $12,651.46. The trust, $157,943.49. The total is $6,078,223.87.
I move the voucher list.
Oh, was I supposed to do that?
Getting used to our new rules again. Do I have a second?
You want a second? I forgot. I seconded it.
All right, thank you. Any discussion?
I just wanted...
Roll call, vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
As much for new business, as I mentioned in all of the comments, I'd like to appoint the following committee review task force. Ben Wolkowitz is Chair and council members Carmella Vitale, Pat Rowe, and Deb Cohen. And I have a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mayor, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I forget.
All in favor? Well done.
Yes, well done.
I looked at her, I realized she had, we forgot.
I forgot that I should...